The Monday, December 8th, 2025, Kiskey School District Board of Directors Legislation Meeting is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Rule call, Mr. Liberto.
Mrs. Ralph.
Present.
Dr. Holter.
Present.
Mrs. Milenger.
Present.
Mrs. Klonkowski.
Present.
Mrs. Kane.
Present.
Mrs. Cronin.
Present.
Mr. Shane.
Present.
Mrs. Jankowski.
Present.
At this time, we're going to skip to number three for Superintendent Presentation Report. And then we'll go to two after this.
Yeah. Sounds good. Before we get started, Madam President, in my report, just briefly, I do want to say that the Board did meet an executive session prior to this meeting to talk about personnel. And if, just want to call attention to the public, Personnel Item 14.1, which is the under athletic or under activities, the names of the athletic supplementals that will be voted on this evening, I have a post there, letters A through S, so the community is aware that we will be voting on those particular items, see, item 14.1. And I can put it back up later when we get to that particular point, but that's, I did want to make that announcement right away. Okay. At this time, I do want to, before we get, before I introduce Mr. Smith, and we'll have our student report, I want to get Mr. Don.
Don Paschke.
Yeah. To give us a construction update and construction report.
Hi, I'm Don Paschke. I am the Field Superintendent for the Middle School Project, and I'm here tonight just to give you an update of what we're doing up there and where we stand. We have four prime contractors, the first being Kiskey, which is our general contractor. And we finally have the building dried in. The roofing is to point where we're done to the aluminum coping and the detailing around the perimeter. We've completed all the concrete work out front, the front entrance and the turnaround, and we're trying to get some paving scheduled, but Mother Nature is not helping us much. We've installed about 50% of the windows now. They're picking up the pace now that they've got a system down, and the windows are going good. The ceramic tile in the toilet room's about complete, and most of the lockers are complete. In the gymnasium, the painting's complete, basketball hoops are in place, scoreboards are in place, and the electrician's putting the lighting up now. And we're installing the science casework and the other casework in the classrooms. We continue to do plaster patching, drywall work, and painting. Our plumbing contractor, Vrabel, he's got most of the plumbing fixtures installed in all the toilet rooms. He's running the gas lines on the roof for the rooftop units. He's installing sprinkler heads and completed his pipe installation. Legalia, our heating contractor, has his entire piping loop complete, all the VAV boxes are installed. We're going to get set up to start turning this system on. It's a process that takes a couple of weeks. The control wiring's continuing, and also with the duct insulation. Our last contractor is Allegheny Electric, and they've set and hooked up the emergency generator and emergency generator system. They continue to install light fixtures in the classrooms. They're roughing in the woodshop, the tech rooms, they're installing cable tray for the data cable. They're pulling wires and punching down the racks for all the data, and they're wiring equipment in the boiler room. All in all, we hope to finish up all the windows here in the next week or so, and then we'll start on the front entrance way. Any questions, comments, or anything?
Are you prepared to talk about the schedule of the project?
The schedule right now, we're awaiting a revised schedule. We were supposed to have it today, and I was hoping to be able to talk about it, but it did not come through yet. As soon as we get that, we're going to evaluate that, have a separate schedule meeting, and submit to you a realistic schedule.
And if I can follow up with that, has the general contractor been working with you all on these scheduling updates and getting their part of the, part of the project, you know, completed?
He's a little slow in getting our, what we asked for, but we talk about it every Tuesday morning, and he's there, or he comes in through the, you know, through the television. So we've been on him, and we hope to have this for tomorrow morning. And then we'll pick it apart and see just what he's telling us he's going to do, and then we'll see if it's realistic, and then we will make sure he follows it, you know. Anything else?
Do you want to go through some pictures on?
Uh, yeah. What do we got? That's the band room. You can see the cabinets for the instruments. The one on the left is across the hall, I believe that's an art room there. This is looking down the corridors. As you can see, we have to paint everything black above, and now, actually today, we're starting to hang clouds. So as you get down the corridor, there'll be cloud ceilings all the way down the corridors. That's the woodshop, and that, one on the left, that shows you the clouds before they are drywalled. That's the framing for them, and they just kind of float, and they run all the way down the hallway, the lighting and the fire alarm, whatever, and they're mounted in those clouds. Locker rooms. The next step in the locker rooms will be the epoxy flooring, and then the fixtures already set in that room, and those will be pretty close to being done. This one is science rooms. They're assembling the cabinet work, and in the distance back there, you can see the new windows, Kiskey blue. The one on the left is our data cables and our racks, and then the one on the right's just an example of our new railing that will be in the stairwells. One on the left is part of the front entrance way. That little room you see is actually for security, and the one on the right is just taking a photo from the balcony down towards the front entrance way there. That's the learning lab. That's the giant round bulkhead. Those strips will have fluorescent lights mounted in them, and then on each side of that room, there's class, front classrooms or study rooms. So it's kind of a place to go for whoever wants to use it, really. I'm not sure what Mike's going to do with it. That's a typical classroom there, showing the blue, classic laminate casework, the new windows, ceilings are in, the lights are in, the little dots in the ceiling are the sprinkler heads. So that one's ready for flooring. And there's our gym, showing the scoreboards, the hoops, the dividers also installed in there. Once the electrician finishes the lighting, we will start the floor refinishing. Is that all we got?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Pastor Lawrence, since we'll have three new members now, can we schedule another tour to just bring our new incoming board members up to speed and kind of see what's going on in the process?
Great idea. I can coordinate that tomorrow with PJ to get a tour scheduled for our new board members.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Let me know when you want to come up. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Next up, I think we'll have our student representative report, and then we'll move on. Alex.
Oh, kind of creaky. Okay. So we got a lot of new people here, a lot of new people sitting out there, and welcome to all the new board members. I'm Alex Clark, and I'm the Junior President of Student Council, which means I get to come and talk to all of you as the student representative and just tell you about everything that's going on in the high school. So, on Friday, December 12th, a Toys for Cabs event will be held in the high school atrium with toys to give back to the community. A number of free activities will be held at the event along with food trucks like Delvecchio's, and everyone can come and donate their toys to stuff a bus, and the toys will be given back to their community. Key Club has adopted three families through the Adopt a Family program this holiday season. Members could donate toys to be given to the families we adopted. Key Club is also collecting toys for the Toys for Cabs event. Tomorrow, the 9th, the intermediate school will be having their winter concert in the auditorium. The seventh grade concert will be at 6:30, and the eighth grade concert will be at 8:00. The eighth grade chamber singers will be singing a song with members of the high school Cav Singers. Student Council's Cav-a-thon will take place this month. Cav-a-thon is where Student Council raises money throughout the district and then donates all of the money back to charity. On December 16th and 17th, the chorus program will be holding a chorus camp available for grades K through 4. Kids can come sing Christmas songs and learn dances to go along with them. On the 17th, there will be a show choir concert in conjunction with a performance of the campers. And winter sports are now in full swing. Winter track began practice, and the swim team had their first meet today. Both the boys' and girls' basketball and wrestling teams are already bringing home wins for the season. And then I just want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up, Madam President, I want to turn the program over to Alicia Zarek.
Hi, I'm Alicia Zarek, and one of the Assistant Principals at the high school. I'm very excited to introduce three of our high school students who have worked hard to prepare two holiday songs, and so we have Ben Lewidowski, Mario Krupi, and Lucas Wile, and they are going to perform a trumpet trio for all of you.
Can you guys just go around, kind of introduce yourself to us? No, I'm sorry, turn back around. So, I know she said name, but I don't, I can't match names with who you are and like what grade you are, how long you've been playing your instrument.
I'm Mario. I'm a freshman, been playing for about five years.
Okay.
I'm Ben Lewidowski, I've been playing since like fourth grade.
I'm Jacob Tucker Knopf, I guess why.
He got sick.
I apologize. I didn't know we had a change.
I've been playing for seven years now.
Okay.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you guys.
I also wanted to give Sarah McMeans a chance to come up and speak as well.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sarah McMeans, and I'm the high school chorus teacher, and I have five of my kiddos who are going to perform for you also this evening. We have Gianna Meese, Peyton Raga, Logan McMeans, Luke Duda, and Lacey King, and they're going to sing two songs for you this evening. The first is familiar, it's Silent Night, and the second is actually one that they performed at their concert last month. It's called Going Up to Bethlehem. Just going to come over and give them some notes real quick.
[singing] Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright, round yon virgin, mother and child, holy infant so tender and mild, sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly Silent night, holy night, shepherds quake at the sight, glory stream from heaven afar, heaven hills sing hallelujah, Christ the Savior is born, Christ the Savior is born.
Glory to God in the highest, heaven on earth, goodwill to all, shepherds may bring you peace on earth, bring out the angels come, when the angels have left and gone to heaven, the shepherd soon did say, let's go now and see this thing that has happened in Bethlehem today, we're going up to see the baby, we're going up to visit him, under a star so bright, a stable bathed in light, we'll find the holy child within, we're going up to Bethlehem, we're going up and up and up, up to a stable, up and up and up, to find a manger, up and up and up, to see a baby child, a baby child, we're going up to see the baby, we're going up to visit him, under a star so bright, a stable bathed in light, we'll find the holy child within, we're going up to Bethlehem, we're going up and up and up, the shepherds found him, up and up and up, worship the baby, up and up and up, they met to spread the good news, they spread the news, we're going up to see the baby, we're going up to visit him, under a star so bright, a stable bathed in light, we'll find the holy child within, we're going up to Bethlehem, we're going up to see the baby, we're going up to visit him, under a star so bright, a stable bathed in light, we'll find the holy child within, we're going up to Bethla- Bethlehem, we're going up to Bethlehem, Bethlehem.
Maybe same thing again for you guys, kind of run through names, how long you've been in chorus?
My name's Peyton Raga. I've been in chorus since fifth grade.
My name's Logan McMeans. I'm in eighth grade, and I've been in chorus since fifth grade.
My name's Luke Duda. I'm a sophomore, and I've been in chorus since seventh grade.
My name's Gianna Meese. I'm a sophomore, and I've been in chorus since sixth grade.
My name is Lacey King. I'm a sophomore, and I've been in chorus sixth, chorus, sixth, sixth grade.
All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for letting the music department.
Yes. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes my report for now.
Okay. We will now move on to number two, oath of office for new board members. So first, we will do an introduction of all interested candidates. We will have each of you come to the podium one by one and give a two-minute introduction, and then we will open it up to the board members for any questions, and we will do it in alphabetical order. So first up, I would call Joseph Calley, if you would come up and speak to Mike.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Joe Calley. I'm a resident of 310 Jackson Drive, Polo, PA, and I can tell you that I stumbled upon the vacancy searching on Skyward for my children's grades. It wasn't anything I was looking for, it kind of popped up, and after thinking about it and talking to some close family members for three days, I decided that I would like to apply for one major reason. I graduated from this district in 1999, and I could tell you without a shadow of a doubt, this is a special place. It's a special place because the teachers in it. From Mr. Toncini to Mr. Stasco, I had, in the intermediate school, to Mrs. Phillips, who I believe is now a librarian with my math teacher, to Mr. Balla, and believe it or not, Mr. McKenzie, who I never even had, made an impact on my life. Mr. McKenzie found me in Build-A-Bear 10 years ago while I was getting something for my son and said, "We're proud of you." I said, "Mr. McKenzie, I never had you." He said, "We know where our graduates are." That's a special place. I've been in education for 22 years as a teacher, Dean of Students, Vice Principal and Principal. I think I offer a unique perspective to the Board. I believe in servant leadership. We're all here to make the community a better place. I'd be humbled to join the aid of you in collaboration and moving forward. Dr. Holter, I'd like to thank you for asking the architect questions. One of the things, I think the communication in this district has drastically improved, whether it's the app or the Skyward messaging. The one thing that I did have a question about selfishly, because my son's going to enter sixth, seventh grade next year, is where were the renovations? I think this is a great place. I think this is a very special place, and I can't tell you enough that education is drastically changing. The school I work with shares a border with Kiskey, and I can tell you that truancy, transancy, apathy are killing us. I could also tell you that we're experiencing a teacher shortage like we've never seen before, not just with substitutes, but for our qualified teachers in the sciences, chemistry and biology. We have to get ahead of it because it's a statewide problem. I'd humbly like to serve with you, collaborate, and in open any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions from the board?
I have one. What do you feel is the biggest need that the district needs to address as a potential board member coming in?
Okay. I think any need, and I don't think this is specific to Kiskey, and I will be the first to tell you, my experiences at the upper elementary in the south where my children attend. So when I speak of this, I don't want you to think it's the whole district. I think building the relationship and parental involvement solves 99% of the problems. Getting people face to face, I can't tell you enough how many times people will give a dojo message, an email, and picking up the phone is a lost art. I think getting the people in the building, whether it's through title programs or other programs we have, showing them what we have to offer, and lending that hand to the community, business leaders, parents. I would say in the last 10 years, not education, technology has put a rift between people, and that rift keeps getting wider. I think reaching out to the individuals, showing them what the schools are doing, inviting them in to partner, and build a relationship together for their children is probably a good place to start in the right direction.
I have a question for you. Being on the school board is a very large time commitment, so how are you prepared to, not only we have the two meetings a month, but oftentimes we have different policy meetings, different executive sessions, because I know everybody is really busy, I just wanted to ask you how you are going to manage your life as well as a big time commitment with the school board?
In the job I currently have, where I'm principal, night and evening activities are pretty scarce. I would be the first to tell you, if I was in a secondary role right now, I probably wouldn't be here because that secondary commitment's a little bit differently. I would be the first to tell you, the first thing in my life is my son and daughter, they come first. My job is an important part, this is the community I grew up in, and I will give it dedication, I will give it time, whether it's through emails or phone calls or collaboration, I could promise you that the phone's always available, and unless it's utterly, I can't meet. I'll be upfront with you about that, but you have my word that I will try to be here as much as I can and plan on being here on every meeting you have.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next, we'll have Alicia Lilak.
It's nice to meet you. Am I being heard? I don't know if I'm, okay. Sorry. My name is Alicia Lilak. I am running for school board because I think every Kis, every child at Kiskey deserves the opportunity to belong, thrive, and succeed. I have two high schoolers in the district, one in 10th grade, and I have a senior, and I see every day the ways that Kiskey is able to succeed and wears places that it falls short. And I'm running to make sure every voice in our community is heard, respected, and represented. For my career, I work as a CT technologist, and that requires me to be able to listen and communicate and advocate for my patients in a lot of different ways. Means fighting with them for, fighting doctors for my patients, means fighting other employees and insurance companies and all kinds of different things. So it's definitely something that I'm familiar with. And they're not just part of my job, these skills, empathy, patience, and commitment to community and the people around me, that's part of who I am as a person. And I think that that's a gift that I could share with the school board and with the families in the Kiskey district. I envision a district where learning... I envision a district where learning, inclusion, opportunity guide every decision. And that transparency and open communication and collaboration will just be the thing that pushes us all together through this. I'm not running to push an agenda. I'm just here to listen, to learn, and to represent families and to help build a district where everyone feels supported, welcome, and able to grow. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I'll ask the same question, just to be fair and consistent. Yeah, just to be fair and consistent. So what do you, you talked about where we, obviously like where Kiskey kind of shines in some aspects, but where our shortcomings are. Where do you feel that having, you know, now that you're a parent of high schoolers, your perspective might be a little bit different of where some of the shortcomings may be that need to be addressed as a priority as a potential board member?
I think that, like, really the students in our schools are an asset in themselves and that we could really be taking a lot more feedback from the students just to hear what they think about the buildings and what's happening here and what they want and what they need to help them grow. I think that they honestly probably know better than anybody else, you know? So I think we should really be listening more to them and trusting the kids a little bit. I know they're kids, but like, you know, a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we will have Christina Mies.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. My name is Dr. Christina Mies. I'm very honored to be here and possibly join the school board in front of me. So professionally, I have spent my career in public service and more recently now in education. I currently serve as a senior risk examiner with the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation, aka a bank examiner, also doing some auditing. But I evaluate things such as corporate governance, analyze complex financial information. I make objective decisions and help protect the public and our banking industry. I also teach at Westmoreland County Community College and at La Roche University as an adjunct business instructor, teaching business, finance, management, and economics courses. I'm also a proud parent in the district. And my daughter, Gianna Mies, is in 10th grade and my son, Geno Mies, is in 9th grade. Like all parents, I want to know that the decisions we make as a board, you know, are truly supporting our students and our teachers. Having children at the high school level, I think, gives me this real-time understanding of what we need, their academic demands, their extracurricular needs, as well as the transition that they're preparing for. As far as my education, I recently successfully defended my dissertation in August and graduated. I'm actually walking this Friday at Robert Morris for the commencement. And my PhD is in instructional management and leadership. So it is an education-based degree. It's really increased my understanding of leadership, organizational decision-making, and how strong educational systems are built today. And that experience has definitely strengthened my belief that sound government, governance, transparency, and evidence-based decisions are essential for our student success. So the reason I want to serve on the school board is because I am passionate about education. I think that's evidenced by the commitment I made to obtaining my PhD and really striving to get into the higher education system full-time and taking students from their high school years through college and preparing them for the real world. So whether that means college, you know, a career, other pathways, they need to be prepared. So if appointed, I would bring my financial expertise, my classroom experience, a research-based perspective, as well as a parent's voice. And my goal was ultimately to listen, collaborate, and help guide Kiskey in a direction, whether, you know, where our strengths and opportunities are for every student. So prematurely, I will answer your decisions. I am a, really want to see our children prepared for what comes after high school. I really think that is something that we can develop. I am glad that there is now a personal finance course that is there. Some feedback I've been given about that is that maybe it's a little too early. They're already forgetting it, you know, by their sophomore, junior years. Or maybe we could incorporate another one of those. But I really think preparing our students for the next step after they leave Kiskey to be productive members of society is really a focus that I see. As far as time commitments, I have tried to venture down the school board path before, but it wasn't the right time. So now it is. I know I do have a full-time job and I do this adjunct teaching, which is mostly online. But I do hope to transition into higher education full-time and then I can have my adjuncts at the side, you know, leave those behind. But I really do think that this is the right time for me and especially given my recent completion of my degree.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And then next, we will have Darby Zerbeany.
Hello, I'm Darby Zerbeany. I live in Bell Township, out by Beaver Run Reservoir. Yes, all the way out in Timbuktu. But anyways, I'm not originally from here. I'm originally from McGuffey, from Washington, PA. Went to Seaton Hill and graduated with a degree in art therapy back, way back in 2006. I worked in that area for a little while and then went into real estate. So implementing, you know, my skills with both listening, absorbing, logically thinking things through, and part of the real estate as well as like listening to negotiations, balancing things out is part of my professional background. When I, I have two children in the Kiskey School District. I have a middle schooler and an elementary child. And they love Kiskey. I love Kiskey. And being an outsider coming into the school district, what I favor towards is volunteering wherever I possibly can. That's where I meet, you know, other parents, teachers, the community members, and I take pride in that. And I enjoy it. It fulfills me. So whenever this came about, it was not on my, you know, deck of cards for, you know, the year. But I took the opportunity to, you know, and speak about myself. As far as what I, there are certain things that I feel would be beneficial, actually, you brought it up as well, is preparing children for the future. I know that technology is rapidly moving forward. It is very hard to keep up with. But it is vital for our children to be introduced to strong STEM projects and programs and being involved in any area that, that we can, you know, introduce them to, as well as post-school as well. Areas that they can get jobs in and introducing that to. Providing them with something as simple as, you know, balancing, you know, their checking account, their checkbook, if they ever even know what that is. But anyways, so those are areas that I feel are an extra strength, focus that Kiskey could focus on. And I will just, and also, one thing that I wanted to mention as far as volunteering and kind of leveling up, whenever I take passion in volunteering and putting myself into what I would call a project. KBL, I'm highly involved in my son's football organization. I noticed that they were, you know, they needed more fundraising, more money coming in to support the program. It's very expensive. So I took the initiative to throw a huge, you know, event, which brought in the money. It put them in the position where they were able to comfortably begin their next season. So whenever I put my mind to something, I just throw my whole self into it. So just kind of represents my personality. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you. All right. So at this time, we will open nominations for Region Two Representative. Do I have any board members make a nomination for a applicant candidate?
I would like to nominate Christina Mies.
Do we have a second?
Full second.
Okay. Any other nominations for Region Two Representative?
I nominate Mr. Calley.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any other nominations? Okay. So now we will move to a vote. This will be a roll call vote. May I have a motion to move to a roll call vote?
So moved.
No.
Mr. Cooper.
Okay.
Roll call vote. So just so everybody's aware, when your name is called, you will vote for either Christina Mies or Joe Calley by voice vote.
Dr. Halter.
Christina Mies.
Mrs. Klonkowski.
Christina Mies.
Mrs. Cronin.
Christina Mies.
Mrs. Raab.
Christina Mies.
Mr. Shainer.
Mr. Calley.
Mrs. Neuer.
Christina Mies.
Mrs. Kammer.
Christina Mies.
Mrs. Jankowski.
Christina Mies.
Seven to one. The motion to appoint Christina Mies to Region Two Representative has carried. At this time, I will ask Mrs. Amy Obringer, notary public, to administer the oath of office to Christina Mies. All right, we can stand up.
Bring me that for me. I say my name.
I, Christina Mies.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Of this common law.
Of this common law.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you all very much to all of the candidates. We really appreciate you coming out here. We have strong candidates and I appreciate you all. This is the step in the right direction, you know? Coming, being present is great. So thank you.
And if I could add to what Jonah says, don't take this as a setback. Always keep your eye open for any possible openings or any other chances that you may encounter to take a seat on the board at some point.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comment on agenda items. We do not have anybody signed up. So then we move to board representative reports, Northern Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. Kamper?
Just a few things. We had our regular meeting and our reorg meeting last Thursday. We've received a $5,000 grant for the German brands. This, this grant is for the auto body and collision program. The funds can be used for paints, sheet metal, and sandpaper for the collision center. Our next meeting is January 15th.
Thank you. And then the WIU, we have not had a meeting since Wednesday. And our next meeting will be January 27th. So I'll report after that meeting. And then Mrs. Klonkowski, Pennsylvania School Board Legislative Council.
Nothing right now. Does Mrs. Mies have an agenda?
Thank you, Dr. Rolling.
Nothing this evening.
All right. Kiskey Education Foundation, anything new?
Our next meeting is January 13th. That one is scheduled to be open to the public. And I was asked again to promote the towel project. I think they're only like four or five short of getting the next batch to go up on the wall. So it may be a last-minute Christmas gift or something like that, but they are in need of a couple more of those.
Thank you. Do we have any committee reports?
We have a policy committee meeting this Thursday at 5:30.
Thank you. Reports to the board. I ask for a motion to accept the reports.
So we have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Communication?
No communications, Madam President.
Any old business?
No.
Okay. Then I will move to personnel, Nicole.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.14 under Personnel on tonight's agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Moving on to finance. Mr. Shainer.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 11.1.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to legislation, Mrs. Klonkowski.
Yes, Madam President. Make a motion that the board approve item number 12.1 through 12.3 on the agenda.
Do we have a second? Any opposed?
Did I do the ayes first?
Oh, wait. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to bills. Do I have a motion to approve items 13.1 through 13.3?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to student activities. Mrs. Mulliger.
Madam President, I make a motion that the board approve under student activities, items 14.1 through 14.3.
Or do we pull the first one?
Well, should we just do 14.1 first?
Okay. To approve 14.1. Which is the supplemental positions.
Is voting on spring coaches?
Yes.
So if I'm against any, how do I?
That was your turn to.
You would have, wouldn't you have to make a motion to do a roll call vote for each one?
Each one.
Yes.
And so you would have to make a motion for that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion in a roll call vote.
Just the ones on she wants to do, not all of them. So if you want to.
I only have a roll call vote on S.
Okay, so we'll vote on S separately.
If there is a second to vote.
We need a second on the first motion.
Okay. Do I have a second on the first motion, the 14.1? To vote? Okay, second. Now, do I have a second on pulling letter S for a roll call vote?
Second.
Okay. So then, at this time, we would ask the board to approve letter A through R? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay. So all in favor of A through R?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And now for abstentions.
Abstention.
Abstention.
So we had eight yeses and one abstention. Correct?
Yes.
We will have an abstention on.
Oh, Q. Q.
On Q. And we will have an, oh, yeah. On that one. Yep, that's it.
And now we will move to a, that motion carries?
Yes, that motion carries.
Yes, that motion carries, A through R carries. Not S.
All right, so, roll-call vote?
Yep.
You want a roll-call vote on S, correct? Yes. Am I... Can I just have some background? On... Am I allowed to question why we're... I'm just... So I know what I'm voting for.
So you're voting to approve or not approve?
Is there reasons to not approve?
So this is the recommendation for the athletic director?
Okay.
To approve Mark Flum?
The salary?
So to approve the position.
Oh, his position?
Yes, his position.
His position, okay.
To approve him into the position of Assistant Middle School Coach for Baseball. So these are recommendations from the athletic director that are presented to us as school board.
Okay.
So if we would oppose to any of the recommendations, then you can ask for a roll-call, and we would go around, a majority would win.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So would you... would you like us to break for executive session?
So you can learn more about the candidate, is that permissible?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Yeah, okay. All right, well, I will adjourn the meeting, do I need a second? Okay, I will have... This is my first meeting. Okay, so I... Brief recess. I call the meeting back into session. I do need to announce that we did hold executive session to discuss personnel. I return it over to Mr. Libero at this time for a roll-call vote on 14.1S.
Dr. Halter.
No.
Mrs. Kulkowski.
No.
Mrs. Cronin.
No.
Mrs. Rao.
Yes.
Mr. Shaner.
Yes.
Mrs. Millinger.
No.
Mrs. Kammer. Mrs. Jankowski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mies.
No.
Motion does not pass. We will now move on to curriculum and professional development.
Oh wait, we still have to do the other...
Oh, I'm fully in grade.
Yeah. Madam President, I make a motion that the board approve items 14.2 and 14.3 under Student Activities.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. We'll move on to item 15, Curriculum and Professional Development. Dr. Halter.
I have said the board approved 15.1 on tonight's agenda.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that one carries. Item 16, Construction, we do not have anything at this time. And we will now move on to... Citizens' comment on non-agenda items. I do not have anybody signed up, is there anybody in public who did miss? No, okay. Then we will move to Director's Comments. I will start with Dr. Mies. At this time, we'll have Director's Comments, so you can have any comment you would like to share, I'm not sure.
I guess I should have... Thank everyone, and I'm glad to be a part of the school board, and I look forward to serving our community, our students, our teachers, and making sure everyone's supported, so, thank you again.
Mrs. Kammer?
Mrs. Jankowski? I love that the kids came tonight, some of them are still here, thank you, it made me happy, hi. You know, you didn't do much, but they... You weren't singing or playing an instrument, I mean, it was wonderful, thank you, thank you, and congrats.
Mr. Shaner?
The music was great, great seeing young kids doing what they like. The candidates for Region Two, please remember, please run again in 2027. I will not be rerunning again, so there's going to be an open seat for sure in Region Two. John, that, thank you.
Mrs. Millinger?
Again, yes, love the kids coming in, that's probably the highlight of these meetings for me, is when the kids come in and showcase their talents and their... So that's great to always see. Congratulations to Christina, welcome aboard. Again, like John says, always keep your eye open for opportunities to join. And that's about it.
Mrs. Kulkowski?
Congratulations, welcome to Dr. Mies. I look forward to your expertise and knowledge, not only from a education standpoint, but from the financial standpoint, because, I'm not sure if you know, but we're in the middle of a big renovation project, and always needing to look at our finances as a district, as most districts are, so we look forward to all of your experience and knowledge. And yes, thank you to our band and our chorus, and Mrs. Mies, I highly expect, is she still here?
Yes.
Yeah, Mason needs to be here next time, I'm not sure why you can't talk him into doing things like this. But yes, thank you guys so much for sharing all of your talents with us, and that's all.
Mrs. Cronin? Just the same, I just appreciate the kids coming in, your son Aladdin. I still hear Arabian every day in my life in my house. As you don't know, they did a junior, like a junior program over the summer. They took part, became best friends with Stephanie's daughter, he's 10 years older than her. But we appreciate everyone that did show interest in the school board, and I think you have something specific to bring to this board, and I think that's what being on a board's all about, everyone having a different, you know, something else to bring to the table. So I thought you were the best choice, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Halter?
I'll say what everybody else said, but welcome, so happy to have you on the board.
Thank you.
Dr. Lawrence?
No, again, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that expressed their interest in board position. I think everybody was really highly qualified, which was really incredible to hear. The reasons why folks want to serve on the school board, and Dr. Mies, congratulations. Certainly looking forward to working with you in the coming days. Again, we won't meet again until January, so wish everybody a happy holiday, and just thanks again to have the kiddos coming out, it's always great, and as everybody says, to kind of see them, you know, the talent that our kids have, and as I think somebody said, doing what they love, so certainly appreciate that. So those are all the... and Stuffabuzz, I just want to remind everybody again, Stuffabuzz is happening on Friday, I think 5 o'clock it starts.
5 o'clock, 5 to 8.
5 to 8, so a great community event, and come out and support that program, so that's all.
And I will echo what everybody has said around the board, Dr. Mies, welcome. You do bring a very unique finance background, and you know, we always need somebody in finance, so very happy for that. And Key Club, I just want to really say, great job, Key Club, for really putting in the hours. Three families, you know, were able to provide a good Christmas, too, along with Stuffabuzz on Friday. So thank you to all the kids for really, really giving back to our community, and that's what I think a lot of us are here for, to give back to our community. And that is all I have. Do I have... Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.